Good evening. And of course, Happy New Year. I am Rosson Hansen Supervisor of Fine Arts. It is my honor to welcome you tonight to our first entertainment for 2018. Before we begin, I'd like to recognize our board members. Please hold your pause. Our Board President from District 13, Ms. Robin Mullet. Board Vice President, District 3, Mr. Mike Dermon. District 1, Mr. Neil Henigan. District 2, Ms. Beth Heintz. District 4, Mr. Jack Loop. District 7, Mr. Willie Jeter. District 12, Mr. Ricky Hersi Jr. And District 14, Mr. Dennis Cuzan. Please also help me welcome Superintendent, Mr. Trey Foles. Associate Superintendent, Mr. Peter Jabia. Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Regina Sanford. And Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Mike Cosay. I call your attention to the artwork displayed in the atrium. Students from Ponchartrain Elementary School have been studying ancient Roman mosaics. Please take a moment after the program tonight to view the students' mosaics. Their art teacher is Ms. Paula Orso. According to my weather app, just as we've had an unseasonably cold temperatures last week, more cold weather is ahead with temperatures not getting out of the 40s. No, I'm not your meteorologist, but I am here to introduce a group that will help you enjoy this exceptionally cold winter we've been having. Tonight, we welcome the Clearwood Junior High School Corral from Sludell singing a tribute to winter. They are under the direction of Music Teacher, Ms. Pam Hotard. And I'd also like to recognize Ms. Judy Camott, their Acting Principal from Clearwood Junior High, who is also here tonight. So without any further ado...
Sing me, sing me to winter. Sing me, sing me to winter. Sing me to winter. Take me where winter's a winter. Sing me to winter. There's a festival of light, dance to bright. Sing me to winter. The brown field is turning to white. A flash of bright colors. And the red and black is taking, taking to bright. Huddled together, waterfalls and gales. The wind and the rain, they're a bear. They're taking one creature, one little bird. Well, until the spring appears. Wind strikes the ground with a ripping warning. Winter song begins at last. We will sing with you, adieu, adieu. And we'll pray for the winter to pass. Sing me, sing me to winter. Sing me, sing me to winter. Sing me, sing me to winter. The sky is filled with the cry of the birds. But my heart knows the song will all end. With cries for shelter, cries for freedom, cries for longing to follow. Follow. Sing me, sing me to winter. Sing me, sing me to winter. Sing me to winter, winter. In winter's sun days away. And the sky turns from gold into gray. The warmth of autumn has gone away. As we greet the new winter day. In winter's moon shines so bright. And the stars cast a silvery light. The ground lies hushed beneath the shroud of white. On this calm and still winter night. Still, still, you can hear the falling snow. For all this hush, the world is sleeping. As the stars and watch are keeping. Still, 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 one can hear the falling snow. In winter's moon shines so bright. And the stars cast a silvery light. The ground lies hushed beneath the shroud of white. On this calm and still winter night. On this calm and still winter night. In winter. Redbirds singing from the old pine tree. Hidden in the stand of evergreens. Orange sunshine moving on its way to winter's sea. Holly bears speaking through the snow. Crows like the feathers with their glow. Irony vines with their leaves in twine where the country's grown. Red levers sing for me. From your perch in that tree. Red levers, won't you stay? Red levers, don't fly away. Redbirds singing from the old pine tree. Hidden in the stand of evergreens. Orange sunshine moving on its way to winter's sea. Holly bears speaking through the snow. Crows like the feathers with their glow. Irony vines with their leaves in twine where the country's grown. Red levers sing for me. From your perch in that tree. Red levers, won't you stay? Red levers, don't fly away. I will make you brooches and toys for your delight. Of birds song and calling. And stars shine and bright. And I will make a palace that's fit for you and me. Of green days in the forest. And blue days at sea. And this shall be for music where no one else is here. Such a fun, such a song for singing. A rare song to hear. That only I remember. That only you adore. Of the broad road that stretches. And the roads are far. And this shall be for music. And this shall be for song. Bunches and toys for your delight. Birds song and calling. And stars shine and bright. And this shall be for music where no one else is here. Such a fun, such a song for singing. A rare song to hear. That only I remember. That only you adore. And this shall be. And this shall be. And this shall be for music.
Thank you once again. Just a moment, please. I just want another hand for them. Thank you once again, Ms. Pam Hotard, and also the students from Clearwood Junior High Corral. I hope you've enjoyed the music tonight, and we are definitely prepared for the cold temperatures tomorrow. Thank you for joining us tonight and helping us kick off 2018. Good evening.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everyone tonight to our school board meeting for January 11th, 2018. Could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Mullet.
Present.
Mr. Henigan.
Here.
Mrs. Heintz.
Here.
Mr. Dermon.
Here.
Mr. Loop.
Here.
Mr. Harrell. Mr. Nation. Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Mrs. Seeley.
Mrs. Drucker.
Here.
Mr. Bittencourt. Mr. Womack. Mr. Hersi.
Here.
Mr. Cuzan.
Here.
Mrs. Bellisario.
Thank you, Mrs. Coakley. Would everyone please rise as Mrs. Drucker says the invocation and leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for our wonderful family and friends of St. Tammany Parish. As we are all of your children, we are all asking that you protect us and provide us with the know-how and the intelligence of doing your will. We ask that you give us the guidance of this board, as well as our administration and our teachers, especially our teachers who are so valuable to our education program and our students, that we do your will and carry on your will to do the best that we can in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Board members, do we have anyone that has a special recognition of a visitor that y'all would like to recognize? Okay, seeing none. We are going to go to special recognitions, and we have a lot of wonderful people here tonight. It's exciting. And the first group of people are from the Children's Museum, and we have Mr. Foles with that presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Good evening, Ms. Mullet. Board members, tonight, I'm proud to announce to you the results of our annual Black and Gold Day. As you all know, this is one of our four fundraisers each year, and this one raises money for the Children's Museum of St. Tammany Parish. We didn't plan it this way, but it's perfect timing because next week, the Children's Museum of St. Tammany will be having their official ribbon cutting and open house of their new facilities. And also, as we know, this Sunday, the Saints will be playing their game as well. As a member of the Children's Museum Advisory Board, I've seen this project grow and watched the hard work put into it by so many people. It is truly great to see the Children's Museum of St. Tammany open full-time and for our students to have a place to enjoy in our St. Tammany community. As educators, we all know how important learning and playing are for our students. So on December 1st, students and employees were able to wear their jerseys to cheer on the Saints for a dollar or more donation. Channel 13 had produced a video promoting the fundraising that day, so let's take a look at that video, and then I'll have a couple more comments and some introductions.
Absolutely.
It's time for Black and Gold Day in St. Tammany Parish, a day when St. Tammany Parish Public Schools students, staffs, and faculties donate their dollars to support the Children's Museum of St. Tammany, a place where children imagine, discover, create, and learn. And for now, that place is Kid's Town, the Interim Children's Museum of St. Tammany, a fully operational museum with exhibits for toddlers to early childhood and even programs for older children. Located on the Coop Drive Trailhead, lots of play and discovery are happening already. From Astro Camp, where future astronauts and engineers learned about space through the lens of science, technology, engineering, and math, to STEM Quest Camps, where kids learned about robotics, physics, and an archaeological dig, to STEAM Camp, where children explored STEM topics plus art.
The best thing is to see one of the children say, "Wow, that was so cool." And it's the fact that they're having such a good time and learning through the process.
Lots of learning, lots of excitement, and lots of fun already. But to fully realize this grand vision for the children of St. Tammany Parish, the museum needs your support.
There's so many different things that we can use the money for. It's such a great cause.
Hey, Saints fans, A.J. Klein here with the New Orleans Saints. Let's all team up and support a great cause and score a touchdown supporting the Children's Museum of St. Tammany.
So wear your black and gold and donate your dollars so that the present Kid's Town and the future Children's Museum of St. Tammany can be a place where the children of our community can continue to learn, to play, and to grow.
I don't know if you've seen before, but the latest craze is to do the Sean Payton. Well, I've talked to Leslie Martin, and Leslie has agreed, she doesn't know it yet, but she's agreed to do the Sean Payton for us if the Saints make it to the Super Bowl. So just mark your calendar on that as well.
I'm putting that in a minute.
There you go. You can tell she's ready. We've had great participation, and the Saints being on a winning streak has certainly helped that as well. So tonight, I'm happy to report that on the day of our Black and Gold fundraiser, we raised $19,377.53 for the museum. A special thank you to all of our students, their parents, our administrators, and our employees who continue to contribute and make these donations possible. Joining us tonight from the Children's Museum Board of Trustees are their president, Lisa Barnett, and our very own Leslie Martin, who's a board member and principal of Marigny. Please join me at the podium for the check, and then I'm going to ask Lisa or Leslie to introduce the other board members here as well tonight. So here's the big check.
Thank you so much, and we are just thrilled. At this time, Ms. Barnett is out of town, kind of on a little family commitment. She's so sorry she sent her, regrets that she couldn't be here tonight. But I did want to especially recognize Ms. Ann Baray, who is the chairman of the Black and Gold Committee for our museum and this event. And I'd also introduce Ms. Amy Fresh, who's our executive director of the museum and has been working really, really hard since March when she was hired. We're very excited to say that we have an employee. And if they would, I really would like Ann to speak to the event a little bit. And again, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. We are so excited once again. Since the annual Black and Gold Day has started, we have raised almost $200,000 from this event. That's a lot of $1 bills. So we are so thankful for the support of everyone in the parish. In the past, we've had businesses participate as well, so it really has been well-received, and we are so thankful. And to think that we are opening soon, so we are just thrilled. We had our first public event. It was called New Year's Eve Bash. I don't know if you've heard of it or saw it on social media or anything like that. It was a huge success. It was a pre-purchased ticket, and we completely sold out. And to watch the children in the museum interacting and having so much fun. And like Amy said on her museum and the museum interview that she did for Black and Gold, when she says how exciting it was to see the kids say, "Wow." And to watch the parents and the grandparents, there was this one grandfather that was playing with puppets with a grandkid and chasing the child around with the puppets, and it was just precious. It is so needed in this community. We have so many wonderful families, and we are just thrilled to see all ages at the museum for the New Year's Eve Bash. It ended with a big balloon drop. Every balloon had a prize, and so there was a lot of stomping on the balloons. There was a lot of excitement to that event as well. So thank you so much, Mr. Foles, for always giving us your support and partnering with us, and thank you, St. Tammany Parish. And I'd like Amy Fresh, our executive director, to say a few words as well.
Hi, thank you again for everything that you do for us, and I'm just excited to be a part of a project that has such a great partner as the St. Tammany Parish School System. So we're very excited to have an outlet for the kids, to have something for them to do outside of traditional learning. That's just, it adds to what they're learning within the school system. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have several board members that came for this exciting day. We have Mr. Bruce and Ms. Rebecca and Mr. Al, our treasurer, who taught us a couple years ago. We can't go through the drive-through with the big check. And we have Mr. Tony and Mr. Paul as well. So we want to thank everyone again, and we really appreciate your support and look forward to your continued support because field trips are going to be starting up soon, so a lot of your kiddos are going to be participating in the museum. And like Leslie said, they're already starting to call us for the setup of those field trips. So thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Mullet, if I could, I know he's here for a different reason tonight, but I did want to recognize Mr. Tony Lamont. Mr. Tony has worked for the DA's office and now has announced that he's going back into his private practice, but he was there to help Mr. Montgomery get started. He's been our liaison with the school system. So I wanted to thank Tony personally on behalf of all of us in the central office for his work and working with us, and wish you the best going back in the other day.
Absolutely. Well, we are excited for the Children's Museum, and like you said, it's another way for our students to learn in a different way as they play, and you just can't get any better than that. So it's a win-win for everyone. Do I have any other board members that would like to make comments? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move ahead. We have a special presentation by Mr. Pete Jabia. Mr. Jabia.
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Board members, tonight, I would like to recognize two of you for your outstanding service. You've reached a milestone in our system, and I want to recognize you tonight, and Mr. Cosay is going to present you with a pen. And I'm going to first say that, Ms. Mullet, we'd like to have, give your 10-year pen with the school system and the school board. I know you've got a little bit more than that, but...
Thank you, Mr. Cosay. I greatly appreciate it.
And the second one is Mr. Dermon with his 15-year pen. I just want to thank you for your commitment to our board, to our school system, and to our community, and how much you mean to the students and the employees of our parish. So thank you so much. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mr. Jabia. Do you have any to add?
No, because they told me not to say.
Okay.
First time you've listened.
Thanks again, Mr. Jabia. Next up, we have Mr. Mickey Simon here tonight. I'm excited. We have the Certification of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, Government Financial Officers Association of Louisiana. We have Mr. Simon here from Laporte CPA and Business Advisors. Mr. Simon, hello.
Hi, thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
As you may be aware, St. Tammany Parish School Board has won these two awards now, we have two, for 29 consecutive years for its financial reporting. These awards demonstrate that the school board is committed to fiscal transparency as you've gone above and beyond what generally accepted accounting principles requires. It also demonstrates a high level of sophistication and expertise in financial reporting. For both of these awards, the reports, financial report is submitted to the respective organizations and are scrutinized against a rigorous checklist by selected report reviewers, which comprises individuals with expertise in public sector financial reporting, includes financial statement preparers, independent auditors, academics, and other finance professionals. So with the GFOA award, that's the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA is known as the premier governmental accounting organization outside of the rulemaking body itself, which is the GASB. So the standards here are very high, and your school board is consistently meeting those high standards, which is a tribute to the team here. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Gary Silver to come forward on behalf of the school board to accept the GFOA Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting.
Okay, and I believe we also have another Certification of Excellence in Financial Reporting, Association of School Business Officers International. Is that right?
That's right.
All right.
And this award focuses on much the same criteria, but it's focused really on school districts, so the reviewers are a little bit more specialized in that regard. Notably, only 23 school districts received this award in 2016. So if you consider that there's 70 school districts in the state, 23 Louisiana school districts, I'm sorry. And in fact, St. Tammany Parish School Board is one of only 10 that has now earned it over 25 consecutive years. over twenty-five consecutive years. So that's a real tribute as well. So for these reasons, it's my honor to congratulate the board, to congratulate administration, especially the Business Affairs Department, on this achievement. Gary, come forward once again and accept this award, the ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Simon. We are very proud of our Business Affairs Office and everyone who works so hard in that office to make sure that everything's done correctly and that we receive these awards year after year after year after year after year. So, board members, do we have any comments?
Ms. Mullet, you mind?
Yes.
Do you mind if I introduce the ones that are here, the Business Affairs?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, great. First of all, let me thank Mr. Simon for coming, and I thank him for his support as well and the working relationship we have with him. Of course, we all know Terry Prevost, who's director of Business Affairs. We also have Shannon Jenkins. Shannon, stand up. Mr. Gary Silva, you met, stand up, Ron, and then Ron Randolph as well, and then Janison, Business Affairs as well. But these people right here, Terry, stand up. I mean, this is hard work, and this is work that's very important to our school system. You know, sometimes we talk about all the different people that must work together for us to be successful. These are not people that are in the classroom each and every day, but they are having an impact in our classrooms for the work that they're doing for our school system. I will put this group of people up against any, anywhere, anytime, and I think that's recognized by the work they do, the results of the work they do, the bond rating they have, the budgets we have, what we're able to offer as a school system. I'm extremely proud of them, and I thank them for their work. And for them, it is way more than the work. It is a commitment to our school system. It's a commitment to doing what's right, and it's a commitment to doing it the right way. And because of their leadership, we all fall in place with that, and it all works in St. Tammany Parish. So I truly, truly thank you for what you do for our school system each and every day.
Thank you, Mr. Foles. We're going to move on to public comments. We did not have anyone sign up for five minutes nor three minutes, so we're going to move down to our agenda items. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held December 14th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I had Mr. Cuzan and Ms. Drucker seconded that motion. Any comments from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. So that was Mr. Cuzan and Ms. Drucker. We have approval of the minutes for the special meeting held December 17th, 2017. So someone that was at that meeting?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Durman and Ms. Drucker seconded that. Okay, do we have any comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes for the special meeting held December 19th as well. That was the expulsion appeals. I'm sorry, the previous one was the tenure hearing. This was the expulsion appeals. Do I have a motion?
I don't know.
Mr. Jeter makes that motion, and Mr. Loop seconds it. Do I have any comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to December 14th, 2017. Mr. Jabia, do you have those names?
I do, Ms. Mullet. Thank you. Danny H. Merrill, Florida Avenue Elementary, nineteen point five oh years, ten point five oh years in St. Tammany Parish. Jackie T. Jacob, Leroy Junior High, twenty-six point four seven years, all in St. Tammany Parish. And David N. Caldwell, Six Ward Elementary, twenty-eight point four five years, nineteen point nine five years in St. Tammany Parish.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Heinz and seconded by Mr. Loop. Okay. Any comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we have appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to December 14th, 2017. Mr. Jabia.
Thank you. Samantha H. Lane, Madisonville Elementary, twelve point four four years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Vanessa L. Howell, Six Ward Elementary, twenty-five point five six years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Richard M. Courtney, Sodell Warehouse, twenty-five point oh one years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Sabrina F. Galloway, Transportation Center, twenty-two point five oh years, all in St. Tammany Parish.
Thank you, Mr. Jabia. Do I have a motion to accept these? Ms. Drucker? Mr. Hershey seconds that. Any comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thanks again, Mr. Jabia. Okay, next, we have approval of the recommendation for, from the committee as a whole meeting for human resource education held January 4th, 2018. Mrs. Heinz, do you have that report?
I do, Ms. Mullet. Thank you. We did meet on January 4th, and we have the following recommendation. Recommend adoption of the parish-wide testing policy. And I'd make a motion that we accept the parish-wide testing policy.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Heinz, and that was seconded by Mr. Durman. Do we have any comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinz. Next, we have approval of the recommendation from the committee as a whole meeting for Business Affairs Administrative, held January 4th, 2018. And we have Mr. Henigan to give us that report, correct?
Yes, correct. On behalf of Mike Nations, who's not here tonight, I have two recommendations. The first one is recommends acceptance of the school board policy, Section G, which we approved. I so move.
Okay. Mr. Jeter? You second that?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Henigan, seconded by Mr. Jeter. Any comments or questions from board members? Comments from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
The second is recommends approval of the Transportation Hero Resolution, which was read at our last meeting. Should I read that again or just approve this?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, good. Well, this was in honor of Mr. Brady, Ms. Mitchell, and Mr. Mascaro for coming to the rescue of a little child, actually. And I so move.
Okay, and you would, and seconded by Mr. Cuzan. Okay. Any comments from board members on that?
Ms. Mullet, can we make that a unanimous second?
I will. Mr. Cuzan, do you mind if we make that a unanimous second? Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Good, thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Henigan. And finally, we have Certification of Board Members. Neil M. Henigan, Elizabeth B. Heinz, Michael J. Durman, Stephen J. Jack Luke III, Charles T. Harold, Michael C. Nation, Willie B. Jeter, Peggy H. Seeley, Sharon L. Drucker, Ronald Ron Bentoncourt, Robert R. Bob Womack, Robin P. Mullet, Dennis S. Cuzan, and Mary K. Bellisario in completion of one hour of training for the 2018, for 2018, excuse me, presented on January 4th as mandated by the Louisiana Revised Statute 17:5 through. Remarks, Superintendent Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Do indeed certify that the board members named above did participate in the training and complete the training on January 4th as mandated by Louisiana Statute 1753.
Thank you very much. Okay, I do have a couple announcements. We would like to thank the students of Ponchatrain for the beautiful artwork that will be, that has been displayed this month in the atrium. And we'd like to also thank Clearwood Junior High Choir for the entertainment they gave us tonight. It was beautiful, the little winter songs. And their choir teacher is Ms. Pam Hotard. Also, school and central office sites will be closed Monday, January 15th, 2018, in observance of the Martin Luther King Junior Day. The next committee as a whole meeting will be held Thursday, February 1st. And with no other business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1697.53]